Welcome to a special meeting of the Palo Alto City Council Wednesday, December 10, 2025. And will the clerk please call the roll?
Of course. Councilmember Lithcott-Hames.
Here.
Councilmember Rechtal.
Here.
Mayor Lowing.
Here.
Councilmember Burt.
Here.
Vice Mayor Vinker.
Here.
Councilmember Liu.
Here.
Councilmember Stone.
Here.
For the record, all present. And just to note for the record that the agenda is currently noticed that we have a teleconference location for Councilmember Keith Rechtal, and that is no longer a teleconference location, and he is here in person.
We beamed him right in for this meeting. That's great.
Teleported, yeah.
That's great. Okay. As you know, this is a very special meeting and unusual in that it's a single item, and it is an action item that we could continue if we want to, need to. And so we really want to make sure that the public has a chance to comment on this, you know, significant milestone where we're going to potentially move to 15% engineering. That's still only 15, not, you know, 55 or 75 or 85, but it's a very significant milestone. And four of our council members are not as up to speed as those that were on the rail committee, so welcome all those questions as well. So we will get a staff presentation from, I think, a number of people, and then we'll go to public comment, as is the norm. And a reminder that if we go to a second meeting, there's not going to be any public comment at that meeting because it will be a continuation of this meeting. So with that, we'll head over to staff. Okay. And now we have a recusal.
Yeah, just like last week. Yes, my house is within 500 feet of one of the grade separation locations. I've been asked to refuse from this item, so I will be going to the back room. Thank you.
All right, over to staff.
Can we pull up the presentation, please? Good evening, Honorable Members of the Council. Ripon Bati, a senior engineer with Office of Transportation. Tonight, we are bringing this item regarding grade separation project at Churchill Meadow and Charleston Crossing along the Caltrain corridor. We'd like to note that Caltrain is leading this project because it's within the railroad right-of-way. However, the project is being advanced in collaboration with Caltrain and city staff, and we have an integrated team consisting of city staff, Caltrain staff, consultants, and we are working towards completing the preliminary engineering and environmental documentation phase, which includes all three crossings to develop 35% plans for both Churchill Meadow and Charleston Crossings. Next slide, please. So on June 24, City Council asked staff to further refine alternatives and reduce impacts to the property as we also look into the traffic circulation and mobility elements. The project integrated team worked on these alternatives accordingly and shared these updates with the community for their feedback before bringing it to the council. We also discussed this, brought this for the review of the City Council, for the rail committee before coming to the rail, to the City Council. So tonight, we will share the recent community outreach efforts. We will also review each of these alternatives with which are in consideration and seek council direction on which alternatives to proceed with 15% design. Supporting me tonight, we have Edgar Torres to my right, and also Jill Gibson from our project integrated team with Caltrain, presenting the details on the community feedback and how we incorporated this feedback into the updated design, technical designs. Also, we have staff from the integrated team in Navid Alival Caltrain, as well as Whitney DeMantis. She's also present to answer any other questions that might come up. So without further delay, to Jill Gibson. Thank you, Jill.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. Wanted to start tonight with context of the railroad corridor and the transportation network. The current grade separation crossings shown on the map are in light blue with the at-grade crossings in dark blue. Wanted to, you know, certainly recognize the importance of the railroad with the surrounding community and the overall mobility network. Here's a snapshot of the vehicular traffic showing tens of thousands of vehicles that cross the railroad each day. And as the map demonstrates the close proximity of the community's resources like parks and schools close to the railroad. And as we think about the community's mobility needs, the users of the active transportation network have been a very important consideration as we've made concept refinements. And just to note that as the final configuration of the alternatives are refined, the adjustments may be needed to the broader active transportation network. So I wanted to recap a bit of where we've been before we talk about the current phase of the project. So in November of 2021, City Council provide the direction to prioritize Meadow and Charleston over the other grade separation projects. And then in June of 2024, the City Council approved hybrid and underpass for both Meadow Drive and Charleston. And then City Council requested updates through the refinements with the opportunity to provide continued direction and the ability to focus the concepts. So in the spirit of that direction, from June of 2024, we're here today to update you on the progress of the alternatives and the refinements and provide the opportunity for council to provide that direction, including the possibility of narrowing our focus of these alternatives. And then also in that June of 2024, council provided that direction to prioritize, I'm sorry, provide the direction with the locally preferred alternative being the partial underpass and then providing the closure as a backup. Wanted to note that the City Council provided direction last year, and we've kept these four kind of key things in mind. First and foremost, improving safety. Next, the improving overall mobility and congestion, really establishing the project footprint needed for environmental clearance and minimizing environmental impacts. And then importantly, minimizing potential private property impacts. So that brings us to the current project phase. So this phase of the project is funded through VTA's Measure B and an FRA rail crossing elimination grant. So we are at the end of Q4 this year and really early next year, starting the 15% design phase. And then the next step would be 35% design and environmental. And so we're here tonight, as the red box call out describes, to share an update and then provide the council an opportunity to focus which alternatives that we continue to refine. So as Ripon mentioned, we conducted outreach for the concept refinements we're going to walk through today. So to advertise for the community, outreach included social media promoted via the Palo Alto Weekly. We sent just over 900 mailers to advertise folks to participate. And then just to provide a quick kind of summary of the community meetings, we had two community meetings for both Meadow, Charleston, and Churchill. And we had over 100 participants in the community meetings, over 300 comments. We also, just to note, we also provided an opportunity for folks to engage online, and the presentation of that community meeting was posted online. So wanted to highlight the feedback that we received as a part of that in community engagement. And really what rose to the top were three key themes. First, a lot of interest and questions and comments on traffic impacts. Next, a lot of conversations around active transportation, particularly safety, connectivity, and accessibility. And then thirdly, property impacts. And so you'll see in our presentation tonight, we're going to highlight these community themes in the concept refinements. And then we'll note that we additionally have been, most recently presented to the rail committee twice in September and November, and then met with the pedestrian and bicycle advocacy, sorry, advisory committee in October, and then also met with the school district, and then again in December with the payback. And then in advance of this city council meeting, we also sent mailers out, over 900 mailers, advertising this council meeting. So to recap, the summary of alternatives that we're going to go in and do a deep dive in include Churchill with a partial underpass, also includes bike and pedestrian crossing with two options, one at Seal Avenue and the second one at Alma Street. And then for Meadow Drive, it includes both hybrid and underpass. And then for Charleston Road, it includes both hybrid and underpass. And in the underpass, there are two options that include a roundabout option and a direct access ramp option. So we're going to step through each of the concepts, and Edgar is going to walk through the renderings as well as plan views. And then we are going to discuss kind of the considerations, if you go to the next slide, as you will think about advancing which alternatives with a 215%. We're going to talk about traffic and circulation, active transportation, potential property impacts, construction, and then I'm going to provide a summary of the community feedback for each item. With that, turn it over to Edgar.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Edgar Torres, and I have the privilege of walking you through all of the alternatives and various elements associated with them. We'll begin with Churchill Avenue this evening. And as part of the direction from the City Council and the guidance of the rail committee, we explored options at Churchill to be able to reduce the property impacts. That's one of the four themes, as Jill mentioned earlier in the presentation. As part of that, working with not only city staff, but also the fire department and other services within the city, explored the option for Churchill Avenue to be able to have effectively one lane in Upper Alma, as you see in the upper left, one lane northbound in Lower Alma, and then two lanes southbound. In the previous additions, there was two lanes up on Upper Alma, which required more space to be able to accommodate those two lanes. In working with the fire department and working with, again, staff, we're able to reduce that down to one lane, still be able to provide access for the fire department. And I'll walk you through some of these key components, one through four. And I'll walk you through some of these key components, one through four. The first is that Upper Alma, again, working with staff to be able to come up with a cross section that be able to provide that flow of traffic, access for services, and be able to maintain solid operations from a vehicular perspective as the Churchill underpass becomes effectively a vehicle-only intersection. Pedestrians and cyclists will be accommodated at the Seal Avenue crossing. To be able to allow for that undercrossing or partial underpass at the intersection Alma or portion of Alma, known as Lower Alma, will go down to a T-intersection or a new intersection down below to be able to go underneath the railroad tracks. Cyclists along the Embarcadero Trail, which is a path which goes north towards the station, Palo Alto Station, also has that connection to Paly, as well as a ped bike bridge under number three that allows that connection to the other side of Churchill to be able to provide that grade separated experience for cyclists as well. And finally, in this option or this variation of the Churchill Avenue partial underpass, there is a landscape strip between effectively the pavement and the sidewalk. And that was one option to be able to explore, creating some more separation between the sidewalk and adjacent traffic. Although you'll notice with that one lane, there's an adjacent striped out or almost like striping there, hatched away. That's to be able to provide a narrow, narrower lane for traffic to be able to focus their, their space while providing space for, say, trash collection or fire department access to the homes in the area. The non-landscape strip, very subtle change, is with strip, you see the green on the left-hand side by the number four, the strip goes away with this variation. This further reduces the amount of space needed and reduces the amount of potential partial property acquisition. And I'll walk through those here in a moment. Same features for this partial underpass, except the landscape strip between the sidewalk and the pavement is removed. So in plan view or bird's eye view, think about it as Google Maps overlay, we see those same icons just referencing it within plan view where Upper Alma in the purple, Lower Alma in the light blue with the intersection down below, be able to provide those movements, the pedestrian bridge from the Embarcadero Pass to Mariposa Avenue, and the, again, the landscape strip or without landscape strip. I'm going to do a brief primer on preliminary traffic and, and what we look for when doing some form of traffic analysis. And in this case, we look at the ability to be able to not only serve the demand, but what type of delay or how much waiting time there is for individuals and their vehicles at an intersection. And we do average it out based on, you know, just a total amount of delay over the number of vehicles approaching that intersection. And there's different levels of service. A, think of A, B, and C as like, oh, there's pretty much no delay. D, there's a little bit, but it's very acceptable. E, there's more, still acceptable in urban areas. And then level of service F is, think of it as, okay, this is a lot of traffic. And that can be experienced in certain areas within Palo Alto, specifically left turns across the railroad. So think of northbound Churchill trying to make that left turn, they do get to experience long delays at that location. So with regards to the preliminary traffic results, really the vehicular movement and delay, there's a few things here to be able to note. First is, we do analyze what the existing conditions, in this case, 2025 traffic counts, new counts were counted in May of 2025 to make sure that we were able to account for school activity, the university being in session, just be able to, again, observe and estimate based on the real conditions that are being experienced by those today. And then at the bottom, you'll see essentially what movements are allowed. So in this case, in today's intersection at Churchill, all movements are essentially allowed. And they experience about 30 seconds of delay, although while it shows green, those who are dealing with the railroad, say, left turns, again, northbound left turns, they experience more than that. So that's the, again, the average delay across all vehicle users. In the partial underpass, there is an improvement in that traffic and the operations of that traffic. In this case, for 2025 and 2040, it goes to level of service B, as well for the AM and PM peaks. One thing to note is you'll notice in the columns below that there are some movements that are not allowed. They're essentially prohibited because of how the T-intersection, the new depressed intersection is down below and does not effectively allow through traffic, in other words, traffic going east-west to, across Alma, to the east side of Churchill and vice versa. With regards to the Churchill partial underpass, the, there are potential property acquisitions. With regards to the landscape strip, where we did explore placing some of the improvements within Caltrain right away and some of the improvements within private property, that allows for 17 parcels being affected or 29 dwelling units, approximately two and a half feet along most of those, those parcels. Without the landscape strip, that's further reduced and only acquisition may be necessary for ADA ramp or ADA improvements at the intersections. So essentially those parcels along Alma that are not in intersections, in this case, would not need partial acquisition. In terms of construction considerations, as these projects are not necessarily easy to build, they take several phases to be able to complete. In this case, we wanted to highlight that a crossing, if Churchill Avenue were to proceed as partial underpass as, for the LPA, then the bike ped crossing, we need to be built first to be able to maintain access for the high school, for Paly. That's really important because that is a high-traffic space for students going to Paly from all Palo Alto. The method of construction is yet to be determined, however, for constructability reviews, we've been proceeding with assuming box jacking and no shoe fly. In other words, a shoe fly is creating a new set of tracks to put the train on. And in this case, we're proceeding with the assumption of box jacking to avoid the construction of that shoe fly and the two tracks. There would be utility relocations, including potential undergrounding of electrical. In other words, if the improvements are taking place, taking the opportunity to be able to underground the electrical, phasing of what we call maintenance of traffic, in other words, traffic control during construction, to be able to allow for retaining wall and bridge construction. And in, because space is needed for a contractor to build these, these structures, Alma Street may be reduced to one lane during construction. And again, because the roadway is being depressed for that partial underpass, there would need to be essentially trucks going in and out to be able to export the soil from the site. And I'll hand it off to Jill for community feedback.
So from a community perspective, we heard the desire to certainly prioritize student access and safety. I think that we, we heard a lot about the benefits of calming traffic on Alma Street, while importantly preserving really the, the neighborhood access and egress. And last, we heard, you know, a desire to provide more clarity on the potential property impacts, including driveways and sidewalks and, and planner strips, which we have provided more information in the packet.
Now we'll proceed to the pedestrian bike portion of the Churchill underpass, which per council's direction in 2024 would be at Seal Avenue, which is across, providing that connection to Alexander Pierce Park on the west side of the tracks. So we looked at two options here. First is a Seal Avenue ramp, in other words, where the ramp would be along Seal Avenue and marker number one, it would be in the middle of the road coming from a tunnel up in between, effectively in the middle of the road in the homes. It would include a tunnel with number two, and then proceed to climb up within the dog park area, number three, before connecting to Stanford Avenue at marker number four. This is a, a rendering for illustrative purposes of, of that ramp going down the middle of Seal Avenue. This would effectively eliminate parking along Seal Avenue to be able to accommodate that ramp. The connection at Stanford Avenue on the south side of Pierce Park, in this case, it would not utilize the access road there for park staff, however, that is an option that could also be considered. And then in the, I'm going to call it the, the maps view, the same markers of going down the middle of Seal Avenue, tunnel, ramp, connection to Stanford Avenue. The second option considered is that ramp down the middle of Seal Avenue felt possibly infeasible from a practical, you know, access for the neighborhood. We also explored a ramp going along Alma Street to be able to go down underneath both Alma and the railroad before proceeding on a ramp up along the north edge of Pierce Park to then Castileja Avenue. This provides a potential closer connection to Paly from the, the ramp and from the connection along Castileja or Mariposa. Rendering for illustrative purposes of that ramp along Alma Street, and then the connection to Castileja Avenue on the west side of the tracks, on the north side of Pierce Park. And then again, in a bird's eye view, being able to show where that ramp and tunnel is relative to the park, adjacent homes. And in this case, along number one, that ramp going down along Alma Street on the north, adjacent to the northbound lanes, there is adjustment or potential property acquisition along multifamily homes there in the white roof portion of the building, just the, the side yard there. And then being able to, one of the key factors here was to be able to provide driveway access to another set of multifamily homes from Alma Street and be able to provide that driveway As part of the potential property impacts, Seal Avenue had 14 parcels, which on those 14 are 28 dwelling units. It does, please note, remove on-street parking along Seal Avenue and potential removal of trees. For the Alma Street ramp, there are four parcels with 15 dwelling units that may be affected through partial property acquisition. However, again, noting here that the Pierce Park entrance is closer to Paly. For construction considerations, so this being a tunnel underneath both Alma and the railroad, there will be utility relocations necessary. Construction would likely occur from the Pierce Park towards Seal Avenue. That's where the space can be accommodated. And then because it is, again, a tunnel potentially impacting sewer, there is likely requirement of a sewer pump station to be able to, again, accommodate that service. For the Seal Avenue ramp, there's temporary interruption of access to Seal Avenue homes, temporary disruption of utility services. Again, as the ramp is going down the middle of the road, all of those service laterals would need to be rebuilt and accommodated on either side of that ramp. And with the Seal Avenue ramp on the west side, necessary changes to the dog park and potential removal of large trees. For the Alma Street ramp, again, on that adjacent to the northbound lanes, there's the potential temporary closure on Alma Street, which is dependent on the construction method. And there would be temporary disruption of utility service to Alma Street homes for the utility rotations necessary to effectively clear the space for, for the tunnel.
And from the community, we heard concern of the tunnel use, given some of the experience with California and Embarcadero. And I think we heard from folks their concern that students would continue to utilize Churchill. We heard interest and interest in the design and landscape treatments. For Seal Avenue, we heard feedback about the concern about the loss of on-street parking, the driveway conflicts and tree removal. For the Alma Street ramp, we heard, you know, more direct route to Paly, fewer property and parking impacts, and conversations around how do we improve sightline and delineation. I will note that there, with this concept, there was a consistent preference mostly for Alma Street.
So this is a summary of the considerations that we've walked through. We will have this slide at, towards the end of the presentation as well, to be able to recall during questions. Now, on to Meadow Drive and Charleston Road. So as Jill mentioned, there are two alternatives here. We'll begin with the hybrid alternative. And I'll walk through various elements to be able to highlight some key features that are related between the hybrid and underpass and the contrast between the two. So the first is with the hybrid, both the railroad is moved up and the roadway is dropped down. So this is allowed to be able to allow that separation between the road and the railroad or the tracks. And so in this case, in icon number one, Alma Street is coming down, albeit at a gentle slope, maximum four and a half percent grade. And this allows for the full intersection to be slightly depressed, and this allows for pedestrians, cyclists and vehicles to be at the intersection, allows for bicycle lanes and pedestrian facilities to be able to provide that safe crossing. It allows for, again, the full movement of all, for all circulation. And then it does provide that physical vertical separation between the tracks and the road of Charleston, Meadow Drive in this case. And then the tracks are set up higher. In plan view or map view, you'll see same configuration of effectively the full intersection slightly depressed or slightly lower, approximately four to six feet. That's something that will be continued to be refined. And in this concept, you see at least underneath, underneath the railroad, you see the bike and ped facilities. We are exploring options to be able to provide wider space and more light underneath that area to be able to provide a comfortable, well-lit space or well-sunlit space for cyclists and pedestrians, along with the full movement of vehicular traffic at the intersection. For Meadow Drive underpass, in this alternative, the roadway is fully depressed. So the tracks remain at the same space or same grade and the roadway is depressed below. In this case, you have Meadow Drive going down, and this can vary between nine and 11%. The, because it's going down, there needs to be ramps connecting Alma Street, in this case, from the north side of Charleston, number two being the northbound connection from Meadow Drive to Alma Street, and number three being the southbound down from the north towards Meadows, Meadow Drive. There is a pedestrian bridge to be able to cross on either side of, of the tracks or either side of Alma, to be able to cross Meadow Drive and provide connections directly, or directly to a multi-use path, which is shown in green. There's also, that's number five, and that multi-use path goes along the south side of Meadow Drive to both ends of, of the undercrossing. Please note that because both directions of cyclists are combined on the south side, there will need to be improvements both on the west and east side to be able to uncouple them, so unbraid them to be able to allow for cyclists to continue and be able to access per Palo Alto's active transportation network. And in this case, last is number six, where we show the connection to Park Boulevard from the path, both for pedestrians and cyclists, to the south side of Meadow Drive and Park Boulevard. Here are those icons and markers in the bird's eye view or map view. A few items to note here is that because there's no longer that direct connection, say, between northbound ramps to Meadow Drive or the northbound lanes along Alma to Meadow Drive, they would effectively have to go to a new left turn lane and make a U-turn or access the southbound ramp here before proceeding to Meadow Drive and be able to have access to Meadow Drive, both to the east and to the west of the tracks. In terms of the preliminary traffic results, Meadow Drive and all the alternatives provide improvement true to the vehicular operations. So in other words, the amount of time that vehicles are waiting at the intersection is reduced. In the case of the hybrid, it is improved and all movements are allowed. In the case of the In the case of the underpass, the operation is substantively improved to AMV. However, there are restrictions or prohibitive movements, and then there's, and there are out-of-direction travel, as pointed out, for the northbound lanes, being able to have a U-turn before going to Meadow Drive. And that is the case for both AM and PM peak, having improvements in both alternatives operationally for vehicles. In terms of the potential property acquisition, in the hybrid, as one thing to note, we were asked to explore options for the bridge being wider or longer. And so there are options that I'll highlight later to be able to explore, again, more space or more sunlight underneath the crossing. The hybrid now has one potential partial acquisition that could be further reduced. However, the underpass does have two parcels that affect 16 dwelling units that are full acquisitions, and then six parcels or dwelling units that are affected as partial acquisition, potential acquisitions. In the construction considerations for Meadow Drive, for both alternatives, there will be temporary or full closure of Meadow Drive crossings during construction. There will be temporary lane closures on Alma Street, and that will depend on the construction method utilized. There will be utility relocations and temporary disruption of utility services, including a major sewer line relocation. For hybrid, because the tracks are being moved, a shoe fly is anticipated and would likely be required. There is potential for phased approach to mitigating traffic impacts along Alma Street with the hybrid. There are fewer utility relocations and interruptions. And then finally, there is both soil import or bringing in soil, as well as taking out soil of the site. So the railroad going up needs dirt, the road going down needs dirt removed. In the underpass, we're currently assuming box jacking, similar to identified in Churchill, to avoid a shoe fly. In this case, there's also temporary closure of Park Boulevard at Meadow Drive, and Alma Street may need to be temporarily reduced to one lane. More utility relocations and interruptions will be required for the underpass, and there will likely be a sewer pump station needed as part of that underpass improvements. There will be phased work for retaining walls that extend out from the underpass as well as the bridges. And then there will be soil export from the site if an underpass is selected.
For both options, we heard across Meadow Drive, heard the desire to minimize property acquisitions, concern over the construction period impacts, both closures, the noise, and overall disruptions. And we heard an interest to avoid graffiti-prone concrete and interest in landscaping and shading. For the hybrid, we heard comments and perception of a more comfortable walking and biking environment, consideration and interest in this mixed wall column treatments. For the underpass, noted perception of more steeper, or steeper grades were noted, longer ramps and tighter turns, turning restrictions, and conversations around the path of travel. And the next slide is the note of the consideration summary that we'll come back to at the end.
For Charleston Road, we'll start with the hybrid. In this case, very similar to Meadow Drive, the road is slightly depressed, four to six feet. The railroad is moved up to be able to provide that separation. The full intersection is provided there along with bike and pedestrian facilities. And I failed to note that along with, for Meadow Drive and Charleston, for those bike facilities, there's, there's the opportunity to be able to protect those, those facilities as well as be able to provide bike signals, essentially providing them a lead pedestrian or bike interval, which are being deployed to be able to allow them to move first into the intersection so that they can be seen by drivers. And again, very similar to Meadow Drive. And in the plan view or in map view, you can see those same markers, and I'll just use my cursor here to be able to highlight the bike and ped space going underneath and be able to provide that wider space, more comfortable space for pedestrians and cyclists. In the underpass, there are two options for the Charleston Road underpass. The first is the roundabout, where the roundabout is shown on the upper right of the screen. And that allows to be able to have sort of, to be able to have full access from the intersection through a, think of slow and go. The roundabout slows traffic down, calms it down, and allows for people to go around the roundabout to be able to go underneath Charleston. And this allows for the movement, for example, with northbound lanes, right now they have, in this option, they don't have that direct access to Charleston Road to the west. So instead, they would be able to travel, make a right turn, go through the roundabout slowly, come back around and down. This is known as a ribbon intersection or a ribbon interchange. Alma Street would be up above with the intersection to be able to control traffic from Charleston Road and Alma Street, as well as a ramp from Charleston Road to the southbound lanes along Alma Street. This is a key note here, is that Charleston Road is a key intersection and key access both to the highway system as well as the growth anticipated in South Palo Alto. So this particular crossing is a critical one for that, that traffic, that mobility need that's going to be coming from the new homes anticipated as part of South Palo Alto. In this case, not only is that ramp provided, there's also bike and pedestrian, similar to Meadow Drive, dedicated multi-use path in green, this time on the north side of the road, and be able to provide it along the road with gentler slopes for bikes and peds, providing that access for them via a switchback ramp. In other words, it switches back to be able to provide that access to Alma Street, and then be able to continue further west with a bike-ped bridge on the west side of the And this is in plan view here, be able to highlight the roundabout. And those improvements in the roundabout do require space. There is that multi-use path, this case in pink, shown on the north side or the left side of the page, but north side of Charleston Road. And those, again, when you have both directions of bike and ped travel on one side of the road, they need to be uncoupled or, you know, brought to their respective sides of the road at either end of the improvements. One item to note is that Park Boulevard here is effectively right in, or right out only. So there would be only access out of the community, at least on the north side of Charleston Road, as a right turn to get to Charleston Road towards the west. And then eastbound traffic on Charleston Road can only go into Park Boulevard. And so we've been able to be able to see how that can be not only accommodated, but also be able to provide fire access, fire department access to the homes at that, those So per the direction of the city council and the rail committee and the guidance of the rail committee, we did explore ways to be able to further reduce the property impacts at this, at the underpass with regards to the use of what's known as a direct access ramp. So I'm going to indulge your patience here. I'm going to go back a few slides just to be able to show you that there is that one ramp coming up, only connecting to the southbound lanes, and the northbound would need to go through the roundabout to provide that access, again, slow and go access through Charleston Road. In this case, that right turn lane was effectively repurposed as a direct access ramp from Alma Street up on the south side of Charleston Road to Charleston Road. This provides effectively that same ramp to the southbound lanes from Charleston Road. And then the northbound lanes have a ramp down to an intersection down below Alma Street. This allows for the traffic, again, predominantly coming from Mountain View and the southern side of Charleston Road to be able to access Charleston Road. This is a heavy movement that was observed at this crossing. It's the eastbound Charleston to southbound Alma, northbound Alma to westbound Charleston. This direct access ramp provides that movement and be able to accommodate it with less right-of-way or less property than the roundabout option did. The, in terms of the improvements, it remains effectively the same in terms of Charleston going underneath, the multi-use path being provided, the pedestrian bridge, and then Park Boulevard, or Park Avenue, pardon, having that right out access from the north and right in access for the south. And then this is that same concept in plan and view. And you'll notice that this is approximately where the roundabout is, if you can see my cursor on the screen. That roundabout, the removal of that roundabout helped be able to reduce the property impacts that were east of Alma, further away from the crossing. With regards to the vehicular traffic results, in all alternatives, there are improvements to the operations of, of the intersection of Alma Street and the adjacent intersections. And so that's sort of the key takeaway. With regards to hybrid, the improvement is there. However, by 2040 in the PM peak, it's expected to be able to effectively see that delay increase again. The reason why is because of the planned future growth on the south side of the city. So the homes that are anticipated there will increase or generate traffic that would be experienced effectively here at Charleston Road. Now, as you see in the bottom, the hybrid allows for all movements for all directions. And that means that there's going to be some delay or some more waiting at the intersection for vehicular traffic. However, that provides that, still that bike-ped access, again, at that sort of traditional scale or human scale for cyclists and pedestrians. The underpass, in this case, has out-of-direction travel. However, it is, it does operate better, and it provides those separated facilities for cyclists, albeit providing some indirect travel for some of the cyclists and pedestrians. In terms of potential property impacts or the need for potential property acquisition, the hybrid has two partial acquisitions for corner spaces associated with the potential bridge being longer. That could be eliminated, however, we wanted to disclose that that may be necessary for a wider bridge crossing. And then for the underpass roundabout, there were three full parcel acquisitions and 26 partial parcel acquisitions potentially needed. In the direct access ramp, that was reduced from three down to one full acquisition and then a partial, a full potential acquisition, and then 23 partial potential acquisitions. With regards to construction, very similar to Meadow Drive, there would be temporary and full closure of Charleston Road crossing during construction. There'd be temporary lane closures on Alma Street, which is dependent on the construction method. Utility relocations and temporary disruption of utility services will be necessary, along with major utility relocations and potentially even protecting some of those key assets during construction. In the hybrid, a shoe fly is anticipated, a potential for phased approach to mitigating traffic impacts at Alma Street. There's fewer utility relocations and interruptions, and then import-export of soil, bringing in and bringing out soil. Similar to Meadow Drive, the underpass, we've currently, we've been assuming box jacking to avoid a shoe fly. There's temporary closure of Park Boulevard at Charleston Road. Alma Street may be temporarily reduced to one lane for prolonged periods of time. The roundabout has more disruption to Charleston Road operations and be able to, and have that access to the highway system. The direct access ramp, pardon me, the direct access ramp has more disruption to Alma Street because it's going down the middle of that road. And then there's some more utility relocations. Again, because the road is fully depressed, it will require a sewer pump station. Phased work for retaining walls and bridges will be necessary to extend out from that undercrossing, and there will be soil removal from the site.
And the community feedback with Charleston Road for the hybrid, folks noted the least amount of property impacts. They liked that it maintained neighborhood access, provided minimal detours. We did have conversations and comments about visual concerns about the retaining walls and suggestions on creative treatments. Folks noted the perception for better pedestrian and bike access with more direct travel. For the underpass, concern over construction impacts, a lot of conversations and comments around closures and noise and overall disruptions. For the roundabout, significant concern over property impacts, perceived safety challenges, noting the indirect travel and overall is less favored versus the hybrid and the direct access ramp option. For the direct access ramp, mixed views on the roadway and pedestrian and bike design, and then folks noting fewer property impacts and overall better traffic operations. And then the consideration summary here for reference.
A bit of context here with regards to these two crossings. They are close to one another, Meadow and Charleston Road. And so in the past, they were effectively considered jointly. In other words, both being underpass and both being hybrid. We've also explored the opportunity for the, the two crossings to be able to essentially function independently, as well as looking at a combination of either one being underpass and the other being hybrid and vice versa. Then looking for the opportunity to be able to improve constructability, the ability to be able to deliver both crossings for one if necessary.
The city conducted preliminary cost estimates and were developed as a part of the 2020 effort and then updated again in 2024.
Some key things here. The integrated delivery team or the project team has not had the chance to vet or validate these preliminary costs. And recent commercial industry contractor costs for grade separations along the Caltrans corridor have shown that total project costs have been substantially higher than previously estimated by project sponsors. So as a commitment from the integrated delivery team to the council and its project sponsors is to provide a total delivery and construction engineering cost estimates for the project completion as part of the 15 percent design drawings anticipated in mid-next year. This is to inform or will be informed by constructability with regards to the work or hours associated with the rail service and those service disruptions, acknowledging that it is going to impact both the rail service and the, the community. Construction clearances required for active electrified rail operations and the high voltages along that contact wire. And then it will reflect current market costs and the market conditions associated both with materials and labor.
So in summary, we have the Seal Avenue considerations, the Meadow Drive considerations, and then Charleston Road considerations.
So after our community feedback and review by the, by updates to the alternatives, we, we had these alternatives reviewed by the rail committee. And rail committee on November 18th eliminated, recommended to eliminate the Seal Avenue ramp option for the, from advancement, and also recommended that others' alternative be reviewed at a council level for further directions to the staff. In addition, next slide please. In addition, payback also requested that, to review these grade separation alternatives. And their recommendations was to proceed forward with the hybrid alternative, and they did not recommend that the underpass option be advanced further. Next slide please. So as, next step, we are seeking direction from the city council on which alternatives should proceed forward into the 15 percent design and environmental review, noting that all, at, one alternative at each of these crossings will be advanced to the 35 percent level of the development for, as part of this environmental and preliminary engineering phase. And I like to note that there were some modifications to this, the, the, the presentation from what was posted online, and since there was, there may have been some changes. from what was posted online, and since there was, there may have been some changes on the slide numbering, so I apologize for that, for not noting in advance. And that concludes the staff presentation, and I'll be more than happy to answer any questions.
There we go. All right. Okay. I think it'd be helpful for all of us to hear a public comment, and I'm going to have the, the Chair of the Rail Committee add any comments that he would like to, to the staff, as well as kind of tell you where we're going in this meeting or series of meetings. So can we go to a public comment? And how many do we have?
We have 14 requests to speak. 15.
We can go with the...
Actually, two more people raised their hands on Zoom, so it looks like 17.
Yeah, let's just go with three because this is the only item.
Our first speaker is Roland. Just a reminder to public speakers, the timer is on the dais as well as on the screen.
Thank you and good evening, and I believe there is a presentation for you. So let me, okay, yeah. I really appreciate the height. Thank you. It's a rare luxury. There we go. This is a PPT, right? Okay, great. Hopefully this is the PowerPoint. If it's the PDF, then we'll get to that. So first slide, so my proposal to you is to reintroduce the viaduct but with completely brand-new 21st century technology. It's a launch country which works exactly like a tunnel boring machine, except it's erecting viaduct in segments, 10-foot segments. And unlike a tunnel boring machine, it just goes back and forth. That's how it erects a viaduct. No shoe flies, no lengthy road closures, no impact on rail operations, no impacts on Alma, with the exception that when you erect this machine, it's going to need some space. Absolutely no impacts of adjacent properties because you're staying totally on the other side of Alma in the Caltrain right of way. And in the front, you can have passing tracks. The two links over there, two videos, I don't know when I'm going to have time to show them to you. So next slide please. Okay, so this is what the finished product looks like. You got Alma in the front and you got the viaduct behind it, and then behind this, there's a little link that may help you. Next slide please. All right, so my recommendation is to eliminate all Meadow and Charleston underpass alternatives, advance the hybrids, advance the viaduct, and then we're going to try to look at a couple of videos. Let's put up the first one. So the first one, if this works, is going to show you, uh-oh, this was working great just now. Okay, well, that's the second one. Either one, okay. So what this is showing to you, we can, we can skip this. Basically, what it did, it lifted it so that it can start working, getting some work. So let's skip this and go back to the previous video. So that was to show you the impact on Alma, and this one is not coming up. Okay, that's very unfortunate, because that one actually shows you how it's picking up all these blocks one by one and assembling them. And the beauty of this technology is that all this concrete is done somewhere outside in a factory, just like a TBM, when you got the TBM segments. And then when the viaduct starts, all the segments are actually transported over the viaduct as, you know, as it is being built, and then it, you know, inserts them. This video is a great video because she showed you the final segment, which is the key, you know, between one of the arches. So if you can see it offline, you know, that would be wonderful. And you got my contact information, you got any questions. Thank you.
Our next speaker is John M.
Hello, I'm John Melnichuk. Thank you so much. Can you bring up slide 51, please, Edgar? Would that be possible? So I'm a little nervous. I'll get that out of the way here. And first of all, I sent a letter to council outlining my concerns, which I think I've articulated better than I will do as public speaking tonight because I'm nervous. I'm pretty terrified about the prospect of grade separation, I have to say, because I live across the street, right between Meadow and Charleston. And if we see that slide, I'll tell you where I live. And I should say, thank you to everybody who's worked so hard for more than a decade to get us to this point. Excap, Nadja, Mr. Burt, everybody else on the Rail Committee, and everybody in the consultants and city staff. Everybody has worked incredibly hard on this complex, difficult project. And it'll be hard to mitigate harms to residents no matter what you do. I'll be one of those people. I got harmed because of great, because of the electrification project. Couldn't sleep at night, 120 decibels an hour, or 120 decibels of sound at night, not sleeping. Now we've got 100, 892 blasts a day. What I've seen mostly the, the charging documents here for the construction consultants is discussions about mobility, more than about permanent scarring of the neighborhoods. This is a project of a billion dollars, probably beyond the capacity of our city to pay for without huge grants. And when we do this, I think it's a century project for all of us, and I don't think we should settle for the cheapest alternatives on the basis that there's the fewest property seizures. There's other harms which are not really quantified, and a lot of the language is quite bland. Oh, we'll have shoe fly tracks. Oh, we'll move some soil in and out. That's thousands of trucks for years while Alma Street is closed. I don't feel protected at all by the city so far, I have to say. And that's been my experience. And going forward, this is a much bigger project, maybe the biggest one in the city's history or in my lifetime. I don't want to die in the house while construction is going on. And I'm asking you to please quantify and look in a holistic way about other harms and help us understand what they're going to be. What does that really mean to have shoe fly tracks on Alma Street for years? What does that mean to have box jacking? What does that mean for us who are going to live with the noise, concrete walls, and disturbed traffic forever after this thing is built?
Your time is up.
Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Michael W.
Good evening to the mayor and the city council. After years of deliberation, I hope that today is the day where we will finally table all Charleston underpass options once and for all. The underpass plus roundabout option with its three full and 26 partial property acquisitions is a Rube Goldberg contraption for cars to re-enable turn patterns of marginal importance. Less than 30% of all turns at the underpass would disable otherwise. The alternative solution to route traffic through the Eli Mumford neighborhood was rejected with the argument that these streets are designated as residential, and hence cannot accommodate additional traffic, even if marginal. However, with the newly added underpass plus direct access ramp alternative, we are now considering to facilitate the underpass disable turn patterns via U-turns on Mumford, something which we actually have not talked about today, but it was discussed in previous meetings. This does not make any sense to me. There simply isn't enough space, and these streets are residential. This would create backups, congestion, and overall unsafe conditions. Please do not replace one Rube Goldberg contraption with another one. One of the main selling points for the underpass and roundabout was that it achieves a traffic level of Service A rating. However, K train ridership is still low compared to pre-COVID times and is projected to stay below. We don't need great A rating, and there's a catch 22 as well. Given the exorbitant costs for the underpass, if chosen, the city will not be able to address Meadow, hence adding additional traffic to the Charleston underpass. If instead we choose the hybrid, we can probably afford to cover both Charleston and Meadow, resulting in an overall better traffic flow. Traffic can flow through both intersections instead of a single underpass. Hence, please endorse what is most practical and most economically feasible. Choose the hybrid for both Charleston and Meadow. Thank you for your hard work.
Our next speaker is Patrice B., followed by Sabrina L.
Good evening, council members and Rail Committee members. Thank you for your time in vetting the various options for grade separation at Charleston and Meadow, and I'm specifically saying Charleston and Meadow. Please endorse moving the hybrid option for both of these locations forward. They minimize partial property impacts, are the most economical option, and they should move ahead with 15% engineering. The roundabout option should be eliminated. It still involves unneeded full acquisitions, is disjointed and over-engineered. The direct access ramp should also be eliminated. The U-turn component will move congestion from Charleston-Alma to Charleston and Mumford. While the Rail Committee and planning have assured us that the U-turn would be restricted to passenger vehicles only and involve no street winding or partial property takes, this maneuver is still too unwieldy and dangerous. The traffic studies do not reflect the physical rally of trying to cross Charleston and Mumford, during rush hour particularly, regardless of even crosswalks. The traffic at Charleston will increase dramatically if a grade separation plan does not address East Meadow at the same time. The direct access ramp plan puts the very citizens we should be protecting at risk. We're a school road, Gunn, Fletcher, JLS, Briones, Fermetta, Hoover, also a mixed family neighborhood, including Stevenson House and Mitchell Place. Plus, we have avid bicyclists and pedestrians. Please protect the people who live in the community. We are also a direct conduit to 101. This is reflected by the speed and the congestion of traffic at Charleston and Mumford. Drivers will not yield to anyone. This makes this plan hazardous for all of us. It's simply a capacity issue. Grade separation was meant to improve flow and reduce congestion. The direct access ramp at Charleston Road will not achieve this and should be eliminated from future study. Finally, I oppose any plan that involves reducing the grade separation focus from Charleston and Meadow. This was not the intent of Measure B in 2016. This additional tax, for which Palo Alto is expected to get 50%, means that at least two of our four intersections should be addressed. This is the intent and the spirit of the law. Any further, any fewer would seem to be a violation of the intent. If we cannot do it right, the final grade separation option is to do nothing and put it to the vote before the entire city. Please endorse further study of the hybrid option only if it includes East Meadow and Charleston. Also, thank you so much for your years of hard work. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sabrina L., followed by Carrie Y.
Hi, good evening. I'm Sabrina Lynn. I live in Midtown, and I bike around, all around Palo Alto. I would like to request in your discussions to maybe have some more detailed, in-depth discussion on three areas. The first area is around bikes, so I am biased that way. If you look at a couple of the solutions, there are multi-pedestrian and bike pathways described, but that does require an awkward turn. And if you especially consider that half of the Gunn student population live on the other side of the tracks from Gunn, that would impact their going home path quite a bit. And since teenagers do not necessarily make good decisions, they may choose to go with the cars instead of doing the a little bit awkward access on the bike path. The second is regarding traffic improvements. I know that the traffic improvements are only looking at specific intersections. What that, if both Meadow and Charleston's won't have lights on Alma, if you imagine all of the streets between Meadow all the way through to Churchill, there will not be any lights. So all of the people that live in Midtown, again, I'm biased, I live in Midtown, we would not be able to turn left going south to, from our streets, from, from our little streets onto Alma, because there would be no slowing of traffic that is already speeding today and only stopped with lights. If we add back lights in any of those Midtown streets, or we only do Charleston and not Meadow, then all you're doing is shifting the traffic jam from where you remove the lights to where you don't have the lights. And then finally, with respect to budget, I don't know what the budget status is, and I think it would be useful to talk about potential implications on any budget gaps that there may be, and what the trade-offs might, we may have to do, or projects we may have to give up in order to support this, or incremental assessments or grants or whatever that would have to be borne either by the county or the state or the federal government or Palo Alto residents. Thanks.
Our next speaker is Carrie Y., followed by Bruce A.
Good evening, Mayor, Lowing, and city council members. I have two asks for you, since you're going to be discussing this and going into all the studies that have been done. My first ask is that you reconsider, review the decision that was made, that Churchill is not going to be maybe even ever done, because East Meadow and Charleston, now you've made a decision that they're going to be the first ones done. I, I hope all of you remember March 4th, 2025, nine months ago, a student from Pallie threw himself in front of the tracks and killed himself, and there were two suicide clusters in 2009 and 2015. I crossed there all the time. I am scared, I feel like crying, I see the little vases with all the flowers. I really think you should reconsider the amount of bicycles and pedestrians, which I think is over 1,000, back and forth, going to Pallie and Stamford, because many times it's Stamford, that are using that crossing. So I think that is the more, the most heavily impacted for pedestrians and bicyclists, and that's just from my knowledge of living in this town and having a house on Churchill. And I don't want to see any more vases, any more kids getting killed, any more kids running across right before the train tracks go down, which they always do because they're late for school. I'm sick of it. So I hope you can really look at the numbers and maybe make that in your, in your study. My second ask is, when you do the cost estimates, I went to the community meeting, and I thought there was going to be a cost estimate for the Churchill partial underpass and the Churchill closure plus mitigations, which was Plan B. There was nothing. I mean, and so I go back to my old Excap report, 2021, I think, 47 meetings worth, lots of community people, and the second one, the Churchill closure plus mitigations, had the majority vote, six, and then three people voted, didn't vote for that one. So it had the majority. I never heard the robust conversation about the cost, but if you look at the majority position in the Excap report, one of the reasons was the lower cost option. It was estimated at that time 50 to 65 million for the closure plus mitigations, and the underpass, which we're looking at right now, was 160 to 200 million. That is huge. That was one of the main considerations. And there, the other one that I thought was really important was the construction time. They were estimating two years instead of three, and so I hope you can really go back to the Excap report, even though everybody's gone way past here, and look at page 55 and understand the reasoning that was put forth there. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Bruce A., followed by Evan A.
Hello, city council. I'm here officially for the Payback Committee recommendation, which Rippon actually stole my thunder, I already put the slide in, but we did review this same presentation on Jan, I'm sorry, December 2nd. And Payback had a motion, and I'll read it directly, which is Payback recommends the hybrid options for Charleston and Meadow advanced to 15% designs. Payback does not recommend the underpass options to advance. So that's it. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Evan A., followed by Elizabeth A.
Hi, city council. If you get one thing from my comment, it's that you should be extremely hesitant to eliminate the under- eliminate the underpass design for Charleston and Meadow at this point because of the stakes involved with the intersection. I think it would be a serious mistake to eliminate it for two reasons. The first is that it would foreclose the opportunity to fix the Charleston and Meadow intersections, which are not future-proof at all. I think the first part of this is traffic. Left turns are a nightmare here. If you looked at the design proposal for the hybrid solution, specifically for the Charleston intersection, it would move it from an F to a D, which is still a fail in PAUSD, and by 2040, it's back to F because of the increased construction in South Palo Alto. So we'd really not be addressing the traffic situation, which was one of the main reasons to address these intersections. It's not much better on the Meadow crossing either. I think safety is another serious problem. The intersections at Alma and Park specifically, for both of these roads, are extremely dangerous. You have to either, as a bicyclist, make a left turn just into traffic, which is really bad, and at the lights themselves, you have bicycles clustering, there's cars making rights and lefts, and also bicyclists clustering alongside the train tracks, as previous people have pointed out, all of which make it so that these intersections are not safe at all. Really, they're an accident waiting to happen. If we go ahead with the hybrid and not address the intersections themselves, I think we'll see serious problems going forward. This really means that we're being, we're spending 500 million at least, just to do another $500 million project down the road to fix these intersections. I think we should do this right the first time and save money and make it safer for the people using these intersections. I think the second reason that's really important is the construction time. I think the slides really do not explain the full length, and I'm really sympathetic to John's concerns about construction here. You're talking about either installing a separate set of train tracks, and the reason why it's talking about the phased approach is a euphemism, because they have to phase it over three to five years of construction at a minimum. So I think that the impacts here from this construction for the hybrid approach are massive, whereas for the underpass approach, using the box jacking approach, we can actually continue construction even when there are trains running. I also agree that property considerations should not be preventing good projects from going forward, especially since the numbers themselves don't actually show what is a partially blocked driveway that we could move, right? So this is not taking away 26 dwellings from people who are living there. This is potentially impacting them with solvable solutions. I also think that the underpass solution doesn't necessarily cause traffic into the Mumford neighborhood, because either the turn in the intersection would prevent people from having to go around and make a U-turn, or the roundabout would mean that people would go through the roundabout and avoid that issue. So while I do have sympathy for the considerations, I ultimately think the underpass, at least at Charleston, is the best option.
Our next speaker is Elizabeth A., followed by Herb B.
I will be speaking tonight in favor of continuing to study and prove both alternatives at Meadow and Charleston, as I don't believe that the information we have so far about costs and construction impacts are sufficiently advanced to make a key, key decision. I do appreciate the clarification we got today by the consultants that the costs that we've been seeing are not the ones that they have actually vetted or from the previous study. Based on other projects that we have seen done in the US and elsewhere, the costs are likely to be very different, and the most expensive today will, may even end up being the cheapest. We also, we are very early, but the likely differences in construction impacts are significant. A hybrid could be four to five years, pile driving, pile driving, pile driving, all night long, versus a much shorter period for if jackbox construction is permitted. The other issue is that I think the design is still not at its best. The bicycle clearance levels are 50% more than required heights, which are making the ramps extremely steep and less useful than they could be. It is very hard, I think, for residents and for committees to make decisions and to make recommendations. They are looking at what is in front of them, and it is hard for them to redesign this in their head, and I think we need to go through that process to make it as, as good as possible, including changes to bike network so people can understand how traffic would move differently. It should also incorporate traffic calming on Charleston from Alma to Wilkie Way, which would be possible, I believe, with, with an underpass. It is an unfortunate consequence of our current process that we, we are responding as if every detail, the plans are set in stone, and we are not, we are not even at 15%. Finally, just as, as humans, we, we fear change, right? And that's one reason why people, I think, are gravitating towards something like the hybrid, which would not change anything. And, and sometimes that is a bad thing, because you're actually in a terrible situation, as the previous speaker pointed out. It's a currently very unsafe intersection, and this would lock, again, that would lock something in stone. The raceway between El Camino and Alma on Charleston would remain that way and only get worse. We see induced traffic when we have a, an intersection like this one get a grade separation that leaves it a sort of a normal intersection, which people are used to. You can see, it's not unreasonable to see 30, 40, 50% increase, not just because of, you know, additional residents in that area of town, but simply because people reorient themselves, because as we've seen, many of the people are making turns, they're coming from far out of town, they're choosing to come this way, and they could go other ways. So there are already people who are not using that route because of the train, and they will flock to this intersection. And we will be left worse off, like you are when you add a lane to the highway. It's temporary relief only, and then you're back to where you are, and even worse, because you're clogging all the access roads. So I think we should continue to look at, you know, the underpass and develop it, and I would consider, you know, I think we should not make that decision tonight.
Our next speaker is Herb B., followed by Peggy K.
Mayor Lawing and Council members, this idea of providing grade separations for various means of travel had, for two main reasons. One is that people in various means of travel need to get from one side of the Caltrain tracks to the other, and the other is that those are places now where their train horns sound, and if we eliminate the need for train horn sounding at those grade separations, the noise will go away. In fact, if you look at the data, most of the people crossing on motorized vehicles are commuters, both into and out of Palo Alto, and they have other options of going to and from work. So I, I don't think we, we need those grade separations for motorized vehicles, except for emergency vehicles that would have the ability to, you know, remotely raise any kinds of gates that are blocking them. In terms of the noise problem, it will continue, because most of the noise is from the freight trains at night, and you're not going to stop that noise by having grade separations. No one has ever made a study of how loud that noise is and where it's coming from. And there are, there are two things that could be done. One is, as I have suggested in the past and provided you a copy of that letter, we could be the ones to do a study of how loud and where noise are from those freight trains that are coming through town, and, and seek to find a way to mitigate that. One way that's been discussed in the past is for cities along Caltrain to have a short-haul freight operator, would have more control over the train operators as to whether or not they will abide by those noise limits. It seems to me it's more worthwhile to do that for, for a faster solution to the noise problem, rather than wait five years, what ever line's going to be for not having the grade separate separations that we exist, that exist now. In terms of what we do need for crossing these, they could be just for bicyclists and pedestrians, and I've suggested that they be separate for the two, of course, the different modes of speeds of travel, and for some people on, on both, seem to think that they can take, you know, the, the entire lane, lane for both. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Peggy K., followed by Nadia N.
Hello, Council members. Thank you, everyone, who's been working on this project. I would like to advocate for the hybrid at East Meadow and Charleston to go forward. I think the hybrid method, based on everything I've seen here, looks like the best methodology for preserving neighborhoods, preserving property. It's least impactful, but it gets the job done, and I disagree with anyone that thinks the direct access would be better, because I think that has its own issues. I don't think as well that you should only do, like, I've heard there's funding issues, you might focus on one intersection. Please don't. I think you should do at least East Charleston and, sorry, East Meadow and Charleston, because if you just do Charleston, which maybe is what I'm hearing, you're going to just drive all the traffic in the area to that, especially if you make a direct access. That'll just be a freeway, that'll destroy that whole neighborhood. We have schools, we have parks, we have libraries, all of that in that area. Let's keep it, we can do this, and we can still manage the future by doing something like the hybrid. And the other thing to consider is that since COVID, people are not going into work as much, they're doing hybrid work schedules, some people don't go into work at all. Population estimates in California are lowering. We're not supposed to have the increases that I think you saw with the numbers that you probably got at the beginning of the project. So maybe take a deep breath and say, maybe we can take more time, think about numbers, and, you know. But anyway, my advocate, I'm advocating for the hybrid at East Meadow and Charleston. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Nadia N., followed by Ellen.
Good evening. So we've been talking a lot tonight about why are we doing this project, and as someone who started working on this in 2017, I just want to remind you and flash you back to 2017. Obviously, we've always had safety concerns, but the real truth is that this was not a safety project. There was other safety improvements that could be made, adding fencing, now we've got intrusion detection, LiDAR. The real reason for this project is the more trains that you run, which by the way is the goal, to reduce greenhouse gases, the more interruptions to the traffic flow, and the worse the circulation gets. And yes, circumstances have changed post-COVID, but you also are going to be adding denser and denser areas around the, the area, which means you're going to have more cars coming towards these intersections, which means that now you're focusing on what's your best future traffic solution. And the only clear winner in looking at the traffic things is after spending however many years of construction this will take, and however much money this will take, is the underpass. So why isn't it the obvious winner? It's not the obvious winner, because it has property impacts, which brings us to a different part of the conversation, something that I've been focused on since I served on ExCap, which is what happens to the people whose properties would be impacted, and what happens with eminent domain? I've been asking the city to produce some sort of information for residents and for the council members who would have to make these decisions to talk about it, and that hasn't happened. I had an exchange with the city attorney in 2024 about getting this information out, and we've never had it. I recognize that it's a very delicate situation, the city has to be very careful about not giving out any tax and legal information, but it also makes it impossible for you guys as city council people to be able to have an informed discussion. You guys have the option to have a closed session and ask all the questions of the city attorney. And at a minimum, the city can put something out that gives residents basic information about what would be possible. I'm not saying it's easy, I don't mean to belittle how, you know, the, the situation it will be, but it is really important, and it's a little frustrating for someone who's worked on it for this long, to know that when the bicycle pedestrian transportation plan went out, and we were looking at potential places for bike crossings, those people got notices about eminent domain, and the people who've been focused on this project for as long as we've been focused on it, haven't received even basic stuff. So I am here tonight just to say, you may not make a decision, you may have to go to 15% on, on all the alternatives, but I would really request that you guys focus on what happens with eminent domain and what the real conversations are about, because it's really difficult to say, you're going to spend a billion dollars if you do both alternatives, maybe it's even more, and you end up with something only slightly better from traffic, but you chose not to look at some of the other alternatives because you didn't understand what the impacts were to people. And so I wish I had an answer. I don't. I really thank you for serving in the roles that you do. I couldn't do it. But I do think that as much information as you guys could have, it would be really important, and that's it. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ellen.
Hi, thank you so much, Council members, Mayor, for all the work you've done, but I have to say, I don't think you've done a very good job at the traffic implications, especially when it comes to doing two overpasses within a block of each other. And what type of construction are you going to be doing? Is it going to be consecutive? Is it going to be simultaneous? What about the impacts to the neighbors along Wilkie Way or Mumford? None of that has really been looked at realistically during the decades of construction that this might take. I don't really appreciate having a 14-foot-tall retaining wall, you know, meant to be something that looks industrial in a residential neighborhood, and putting it on both corners of, between Charleston and West Meadow is just, it's not, it's unpleasant. And as far as being a pedestrian and walking across Alma, do you really think people are even going to be enticed to do this? Just like the California Avenue underpass for pedestrians, it's dangerous, it's haunting. And I, I just find that we are sensitive, sensitive to the people that live in this neighborhood, and it needs a lot more looking at in terms of the impacts. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Stephen R.
Good evening, Council members. My name is Stephen Rosenblum. I live in Old Palo Alto, near the California Avenue train station. As you're likely aware, I've been a longtime supporter of a citywide viaduct for all grade separations. On this point, I'd like to align myself with the comments by Roland earlier in, in the meeting. He showed a very nice example of how a viaduct would look, and the viaduct just involves raising the trains 15 feet above grade level, and it eliminates all the issues of traffic and pedestrian motion, as everything continues at grade level, just like it has in the past. The plans that were presented tonight show the absurd lengths we need to go through to avoid elevating the trains. At Charleston, at Churchill, one, which is one of the seven existing vehicular crossings, that crossing will be eliminated if this plan goes through, and it will also require 14, 14 partial property takings, and require a bike tunnel be built at Seal Avenue, which is not needed if, if a viaduct is built. At this point in the process, I, I think at a minimum, you have to eliminate the worst options, which are the underpass options. Both options, Meadow underpass and the Charleston underpass, require absurd gyrations to main train traffic flow, and as was mentioned in the presentation, there are two full property acquisitions associated with Meadow and six partial acquisitions, and the Charleston requires three full takings and 28 partial acquisitions. At this point, I'd like to align myself with the comments by Payback and Peggy earlier, supporting the hybrid as the better alternative to these two, although, again, I would like to suggest that the hybrid is just five feet lower than a viaduct would be, and it, as was mentioned by the previous speaker, it produces a brick wall in the neighborhood, whereas with a viaduct, you'd be able to see, see underneath it. So, and, and I'd also like to align myself with the comments by Sabrina, is that with the underpass, it makes Alma look like an expressway, and it will encourage people to speed even more than they already do. I've been on Alma and cars have gone by me at 50 miles an hour already, and I can't imagine how bad things will be if there are no lights at all. So finally, I'd like to close with a discussion about the costs. The last time the viaduct was looked at for all three intersections, Churchill, Meadow, and Charleston, the total cost was 1,380 million. The Charleston, Churchill plus two underpasses is 1,170 million, and Churchill plus two hybrids is 810 million. I think going with any of those options besides a viaduct, penny wise and pound foolish.
Our next speaker is Wendy.
Thank you to staff, council, ExCap, CAP, and CARD for their current or past work. If you could take a moment to visualize now driving down 101, and as you're driving, look at the sound walls. The sound walls are 10 to 14 feet high. The maximum height per- The maximum height per Caltrain for a sound wall is 16 feet. The proposed hybrid wall will be 14 to 19 feet in height. Above that will be a train, which is 15 feet. And above the train are the electric wires. Including the wires, the visual impact will be a 32 to 40 feet up in the air. The train tracks were already in place when Palo Alto was developing. It is a pre-existing condition. The hybrid wall is not. It would be a choice of the council to build a permanent structural visual barrier for the distance of approximately half a mile to a mile in South Palo Alto. It would be good if staff could create an image of the hybrid looking at the wall mid-block between Meadow and Charleston. The underpass with direct access ramp, or the now-not-considered viaduct, will allow for one Palo Alto visually to continue for the next 100 years and not be divided by a future Great Wall of Palo Alto. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lee Wen Shu.
Hello, everyone, everybody. So as we know, the purpose of the great separation funding originally is to increase safety and to reduce the congestion in multiple Palo Alto crossings on the Caltrain corridor. But now it has only enough funding to one crossing. So if the funding can do the separation in multiple crossings, it's fine. But if the funding is not enough to do so, I think the city should stop this project and use this money for other more reasonable projects. If the city really wants to continue this project for only one crossing, it should not be the crossing on Charleston Row. Because currently Charleston Row is already a very busy street. If doing separation only in this crossing, it will push all, a lot more cars into this street, which will make the traffic flow a lot more worse, I mean, a lot worse and a lot more unsafe. So therefore, if the city really wants to go forward, please choose other crossing, but not Charleston. All this money is from ours, the taxpayers, and it should be used for more reasonable projects. Also, if you really wanted to continue these projects, please, please choose hybrid instead of underpass. Because the cost of hybrid is the lowest and it doesn't require home acquisitions. The reason why we elect you is because we believe you can protect the benefits of our Palo Alto citizens. We and our neighborhood have been suffered with the uncertainty of this project for many, many years and the so-called underpass options for many years. So please stop this project and protect our benefits. We don't want to live with anxiety anymore. Finally, we really hope all council members can honestly speak out your opinions and keep consistency between what you say and what you vote. Thank you.
Our final speaker is Linda H.
Good evening, council members. I want to start by thanking you for your service. These are not easy decisions, and you and many community members have spent countless hours over the last 10-plus years working on designing ways to fit grade separation into our largely built-out residential areas. Now that we are in another suicide cluster, I have been spending a good amount of time working on suicide awareness and suicide prevention issues. Since 2018, five out of the seven people aged 22 and under who died by suicide were killed by a train. The train is the most common method used to die by suicide by our young people. It's a weapon that runs right through our town. We know that restricting access to lethal means does prevent at least some suicides. I know that you all wish you could remove this weapon today. The rail century and the intrusion mats are important methods for us, and I'm very grateful for Councilmember Burt and the others who've worked on getting those for our crossings. We also know that separating the grade crossings is the most direct and permanent means of restriction, especially in the long term. From tonight's presentation, based on cost and complexity and property takings, it looks like we can remove this weapon more quickly if we advance the hybrid options for both Charleston and Meadow and remove the underpass options. And for Churchill, Carrie earlier reminded us that closing Churchill and adding a bike tunnel or overpass was the preferred option by the XCAP. One of the big reasons, as I understand, for not closing Churchill was opposition from the school district, which has a maintenance yard there. In the fall of this year, the superintendent of the school district publicly stated that the district could work with access only from El Camino and does not require access from Alma onto Churchill. So we could revisit closing Churchill and providing pedestrian and bike access separated from the tracks. This would be the least expensive option for that crossing and the quickest that we could advance. As we wrap up tonight, I ask that you please factor the urgent need to restrict access to the lethal trains as you make these difficult decisions tonight. Again, thank you very much for your service.
That concludes public comment on action item one.
Okay, thank you very much to the public comments that we've heard tonight and all the letters that we've gotten in the last few months, both to the rail committee and to the council. I might like to go now to the chair of the rail committee and see what you would like to add to this discussion at this point in time.
Well, thank you. So when the council decided to move forward with 15% engineering on these options over a year ago, we were hopeful but unsure about whether advancing the engineering would provide us with improved alternatives. And even though, as of right now, we're only at the 5% to 10% engineering phase, we've seen that we've, we've really seen some, some good improvements in reducing impacts and mitigating them and some creative solutions that weren't even on the table before. One of those that the rail committee actually made a recommendation to the council is to drop the consideration of the bike and ped underpass at Seal and to continue to pursue the one that has the similar location of underpass, but the ramp on Alma. And so that was the one that was the clearest for us. The other set of considerations, we just felt continued to be, first, so complex and nuanced that we really wanted to make sure that the full council was making those recommendations on what we do going forward and not merely the rail committee through this really extensive opportunity we have to have this meeting and perhaps following it up on next Monday. But we did flush out a number of things. And first, I want to talk about what we may still have of additional information that would inform best decisions if we move forward with taking the other options to at least 15% engineering. So one is, we've already made real progress on reducing property impacts, including at the, with the alternative, the direct access at Charleston. But we still have other opportunities, hopefully, including getting more latitude from Caltrain on being able to have them accommodate designs, whether through a bit more intrusion on their right-of-way or other matters in what their design standards are that either reduce our costs, reduce our construction time, or reduce property impacts. And so I'm hopeful that will happen. At the Caltrain Board, I've been pushing for the last year, and, and the leadership has now agreed that we're going to have a review of Caltrain policies that are really in conflict with one another. One is to promote grade separations in the cities throughout the peninsula, and the other is essentially guarding Caltrain's interests originally on their, their property intrusions and the impacts on operations. Those two objectives are really in conflict with each other. It doesn't mean that we will get everything we would hope, but there is a real need to go back and reconcile that with, at least to some degree, I anticipate, Caltrain will establish greater latitude that will help cities have lower-cost grade separations or lower-impact ones or both. I also think that we have additional work to do on understanding bike movements and what are all the possibilities to refine those. We've, the report spoke about construction impacts, but that needs additional evaluation. There is a wide range of potential construction impacts on the community. And, and especially, as the report has said, to look at the costs and do an updated review, not only to reevaluate the costing under today's cost structure, which has really gone up unfortunately, but also to look at things we had talked on the hybrid, well, what if we had some combination of earth and berm and podium? Which the answer is yes, that's doable, but a higher cost, and we don't know how much higher. So those kinds of things, and how much different construction methods, like a Jackbox construction, can reduce both the direct costs and the construction time. So there's a lot that we've already seen in progress, and I think quite a bit more that we will hopefully see by moving either all or most of these options forward. And I did want to make sure that we really looked at, what are the reasons we're doing this? And things have changed since 2019. Our growth projections are lower, and the number of trains per hour in the Caltrain service plan is reduced. But that plan still is looking at prospectively going up to eight or 10 trains per hour in the coming years. On the, the big thick report of the traffic analysis, about 300 pages, but in the summary, on page 75 is something that I think is really important for us to dwell on, which says that under the current conditions, at Charleston and Meadow, if we don't do anything, queues would extend to the San Antonio Road interchange and south, that's northbound queues, and southbound queues, and that, I presume, the PM, extend up to the Oregon Expressway interchange. And unfortunately, the hybrid option, as was pointed out, does not much improvement on the, on the capacity of the intersection. So we're looking at an option that is tentatively the lower cost, but the main reason that we would be doing this construction has very little benefit for it, for what may be a half a billion dollars. And then we also have always had at a very high priority in our community, safety and security on the tracks. And certainly, the highest safety and highest security is a grade-separated intersection. But as was noted, we have had a significant change at Caltrain in the last months, actually, of embracing these enhanced crossing strategies, which we have most of that installed at Churchill, and we will soon have at Charleston, Meadow, and Alma. And it's a series of technologies that, not only the high-security fencing running up to the intersection, but for pedestrian intrusions, this rail century program for, I know all of you are familiar, but maybe not all the members of the public are yet, but is a combination of multiple video cameras and LiDAR technology with AI that is able to detect unusual behavior and intrusions and will dispatch trains to be stopped, first if there's lingering in a crosswalk, and more immediately if someone goes outside of the crosswalks. We will soon have these anti-intrusion mats that basically prohibit people from being able to walk outside of the crosswalks and going up track. That combination of measures exceeds what I thought we would ever be able to do for security shy of grade separations and can be done in months rather than decades. It's not 100% effective, and we're going to need to learn from it, but it is an exceptionally strong set of measures, more than we ever thought we could have, really because technologies have continued to advance. So I think those are my primary comments from the, from the rail committee and the issues that we'll be struggling with. So thank you.
Okay, let's just bring it back to the dais and see what kind of, I'm sure there's a number of questions in addition to comments, but we can raise those for, for the staff or the consultants. Ellen Williams-Gott-Hames, who's on the rail committee.
Thank you, mayor. I do want to give my colleagues who aren't on the rail committee the opportunity to speak as much as they need to. Of course, I just wanted to ask a few technical questions. Appreciate very much all the work that has gone into this on the part of our staff and our partners at Caltrain and consultants, as well as members of the community who have developed quite a bit of expertise on this subject over the years. I know some of you greatly impacted. A couple comments, I don't feel protected. Please protect the people who live there. You've, you've been heard. I think it's probably the hardest thing about being up here is feeling that deep desire to look out for everybody. And unfortunately, it's hard to, often to come up with solutions that are in everybody's best interests. But I appreciate that you articulated it nevertheless and are holding us accountable. My technical question is on the duration of construction. I think the point has been made a few times tonight that we didn't really get info on how long these projects are going to take. We saw the cost comparisons of hybrid-hybrid, hybrid-underpass, underpass-underpass. Can you give us ballpark on what we expect the construction project's duration to be? I realize it's ballpark as the dollars are, but I think it'd be useful for us to understand, you know, to get from here to there, are we talking two years? Are we talking five years? Are we talking seven years? Depending on the, whether we go with the identical things at Charleston and Meadow or a different option for either.
I can start. Councilmember, we previously had looked into the, these alternatives and have not developed the construction timelines in the newer realm of our understanding of different construction methodologies that we're looking at. So we are, as part of our newer efforts, looking at how these construction timelines will be impacted, work windows, as well as the costs that will be associated with that. Unfortunately, we don't have more greater information, but I can have Edgar add more information to what his technical expertise can show.
Yes, these do take years. We do not have the, the exact, or having a range for you right now. The reason why is that we are looking as part of the direction of the council to be able to understand whether we're looking at one or two alternatives for these two crossings for both detailed constructability review that would then inform the updated cost estimates. Because just for context, when we are looking at cost estimates, this usually means the ability to not only do the work, but the space to do the work. And so for, to do so with the electrified environment that was not present when the previous analysis was done, we would be doing that in the coming months as part of subsequent briefings to both rail committee and the city council. So it's looking at the ability to disrupt rail service or what times that can occur and the ability to maintain reasonable and the ability to maintain reasonable service for those, for passengers along the entire peninsula. This is at the heart of the corridor, with one of the busiest train stations at Palo Alto, and serving not only the city, but Stanford. So we would do that in more detail for you and be able to provide a more precise answer in the coming months.
Thank you. There was mention of a U-turn with the Charleston direct access, and I keep having trouble finding it on the map. Could we pull up the slide that shows where that U-turn is?
Yes, let me go ahead and pull up that slide now. Here we go.
And in the meantime, it's also been articulated that there would be essentially no traffic lights stopping traffic on Alma if we go with the underpass option. And I'm not sure that that's accurate, and I wondered if you could address that.
Yes, so, a couple of thoughts here, and I'm going to go to the aerial view, map view, and I'm going to use the zoom feature, the magnifying feature here. What we are looking at with the direct access ramp, which is here with the indicator number one, for traffic going southbound on Alma Street, they would be making a left turn onto Charleston Road, merging over, and then being able to perform a U-turn here. We've done the tracking, the vehicle tracking, to be able to allow for that U-turn at this location. However, to be precise, the caveat is that it's passenger vehicles being able to make that movement. So it'd be restricted for anything larger than a passenger vehicle being able to make that turn. And so, that's the U-turn that was referenced at Mumford. It would require Mumford to be signalized at that location, to be able to allow for that safe movement, be able, to then be able to proceed on Charleston westbound. The same would occur for traffic going eastbound on Charleston Road, wanting to access the northbound lanes along Alma. They would proceed along Charleston, make the U-turn when permitted here, and then be able to proceed to the ramp that connects Charleston to Alma Street before making the right turn going north. That's the U-turn alluded to.
So it's maintaining a little bit of that roundabout feel for two different turns, but eliminating it for the people who are trying to come north on Alma and head to west Charleston?
That's accurate.
Okay. Actually, did not realize that until just now, so thank you. I realize I'm over time. If it's possible to just answer that question about, it has been asserted that there will, if we do underpass, there will be no traffic lights halting traffic, greatly impacting people north of these intersections who live west, sorry, east of Alma, try to make a left to come south on Alma. They currently count on those traffic lights to create a break in the traffic so that they can cut across.
Yes.
And it's been implied that that would no longer happen. Is that accurate?
So, in terms of the ability to be able to access for roadway cyclists, let's just be clear, because there is the multi-use path for those who choose to use the multi-use path in pink, per the cursor, if they can see that. In terms of the, there is in the direct access ramp underpass option, a signal at the, what I'm going to call lower Alma, or lower Charleston, because it has to allow for the left-turning movements out, out of that ramp, and still be able to allow for traffic. So there, it can be signalized breaks in the traffic that they're experiencing today with what they call platoons.
But on upper Charleston, for traffic just coming straight from Mountain View all the way up through Palo Alto, on Alma?
On Alma, there would be the signal at upper Alma as well. So this is reflected, I'm going to zoom out here and go to the previous slide with the rendering. So here, you see that the upper Alma is fully signalized to be able to allow for those left-turning movements on southbound Alma and on westbound Charleston at the upper intersection.
Right, so we will get some red lights there?
You would, yes.
And on Meadow? Meadow underpass, I think there are, there is no traffic light.
So there are two traffic lights in that case, and we'll go back. I apologize for having to go through many slides. In this case, there would be a signalized intersection for the southbound access ramp, and then there would be a signalized intersection for the northbound access ramp.
But if you're coming straight up on Alma, upper?
Ah, so at that location, there would not be a signal.
So the people north of it, counting on a traffic light to create a break in traffic. If we went with a Meadow underpass, that traffic light would be eliminated, but there would, with any solution at Charleston, there's still something impeding that forward northbound traffic on Alma?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I just have one question and comment, being on the rail committee as well. In this, slide 55, where you have that, it's edited somewhat since the rail committee and that, the pink letters, the obvious idea there is that it improves for 15 years till 2040, and then it goes back to F, right? Are you assuming there that, are you making any assumptions about Meadow? Is it open, I mean, sorry, is it grade-crossed or not, or is it as-is?
So, as part of this analysis, we did look at Meadow being grade-separated as well. So in this case, it would have been a hybrid condition concurrent with the Charleston hybrid condition.
So this assumes that both are there?
Both would be hybrid, correct.
Which makes the problem even bigger.
So, one area to clarify is the difference between delays and queues.
Definitely.
So, in this case, yes, the delays would be, would say, return back to over 100 seconds on average for that intersection. However, because the tracks are now separated, there's now more reliability at the intersection with the signal operation. So those queues would be much reduced compared to the existing condition.
And I'm sure in the 15% and beyond, you'd be looking at other ways to kind of improve this beyond 2040.
That's correct. Not only would we look at ways to be able to improve operations, we'd also look for opportunities for safe crossings, how that then dovetails with the city's plans for other improvements with regards to active transportation improvements on either side of the projects.
Yeah, okay. The only comment I want to make is that we've had some public comment tonight of saying, let's just, let's just shut this down, we don't need it. I just could not disagree more with that, because we have to take a future view, and we're now getting 6,086 units from the state. That's not supposed to last 100 years, that's less than 10 years, and the state will do that again and again and again. So we have a lot of population to plan for, for the next 100 years. I don't, I don't think it's an option to just say, let's wait a while. Okay, I want to go to others. I'm sorry, I haven't been looking at the lights. I think it might have been Councilmember Stone that was first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I'll be the first councilmember not on the rail committee, so first, appreciate all my colleagues on the rail committee. I know this has been a lot of work, huge lift, same with staff and all the community members and community organizations that have participated. Now, it's been slow, but we're getting there. Just a few, I think, just kind of quick comments of where I am. Completely agree with the rail committee on the Alma Street ramp, that seems just so obvious to me, so I like the Alma Street ramp, as far as, sorry, as far as the bike pedestrian crossing, to make sure I'm clear there. Just simpler, less disruptive. To Seal Avenue residents, more convenient exit point on Pierce Park, it's great. Definitely supportive of the Churchill partial underpass, rather than, rather than the closing. And then, of course, when it comes to Charleston Meadow, that's the, that's the real challenge, So, yeah, so I have a few more questions on it. And I, I see the, I see the logic of the, of the hybrid, I like the lower cost, I like the zero full takings and the less impact on the partial takings, and really appreciate all the work that has been done to try to engineer really reducing that even more. But also, I agree with comments that have been made, this really has, has always been a project to reduce traffic impacts, and it has, of course, all these other great benefits, as well as the safety impacts, but at its core, it has always been a traffic reduction. So, I guess my first question really kind of comes down to that traffic. I'm trying to really understand level of service and all that. So does level of service, does that only count wait times for those people who are waiting at that particular intersection, or does it include kind of total added travel time for travelers who are now impacted by that intersection? I don't know how, I'm trying to, just struggle to articulate that, but I guess, for example, on this roundabout underpass, right, the wait time, the level of service is significantly lower, but does that include now this circuitous, complicated route that people have to take by doing that?
So, yes, in the voluminous traffic study that Councilman Robert alluded to, yes, that does have additional intersections. So this is representing at least at the crossing locations, as part of the presentation. In the report, there are many intersections that are analyzed, both upstream of the crossing and downstream. So it goes to Mumford, it goes to Park and Wilkie Way. And in this case, it's only the traffic at the precise intersection reflected on the slide, or reflected in your page. But we have the information across the board. Now, in terms of your question, travel time, that is not explicitly reflected in the report. However, the added direction travel does have some additional travel time.
Okay.
But it's modest in nature.
Okay. I think, for me, that would be more, I'd be more interested in kind of seeing that comparison, because I don't, I don't care if I'm sitting at a light, waiting to turn left, if that takes, if that takes less or more time than now having to make a right turn, drive down a couple blocks, make a roundabout, or do a U-turn at a light and continue to travel. So that would be really helpful to be able to see, because I think that's what's most important, at least how, the way I'm viewing this. We can provide that additional information. Great, thank you. What are the, what are the cost and time implications if tonight or Monday, our direction is move both at Charleston and Meadow, both a hybrid and an underpass option? Of course, assuming also, within the underpass option, we can, we can narrow it down at least to the, what, the ramp or the roundabout one. I don't really, I don't like the roundabout, I think the ramp is the, is, makes more sense to me, but what does that, what does that now look like compared to if we were able to just say, move forward with hybrid, or underpass?
I can start, and Edgar, if you can add, do that. So, as far as the timings of the project is concerned, the city has all the, you know, discretion of how we want to move forward with the project. There are certain funding constraints that we already have. We have FRA funding, which requires us to complete the 35% design by end of 2027. And then we have a follow-up funding, which is already awarded, but we have not been allocated yet, but we have to show them that we are able to do the final design starting 2027. So there is that caveat, and we would be able to pursue and ask state to see if they can postpone that, but that's not guaranteed, and we'll have to work with that secondary funding source for the final design, which is about $24 million.
If I can add to that? Hi, Rhea Huthbarat, Light Chief Transportation Official. I think what was being said there also is that if we're doing design for two options, it's taking longer.
Yeah, figured that. A thought on, on how much, significantly, like, I'd love a ballpark on that, and the threat of losing out on, on funding, especially if we're talking about in the tens of millions of dollars.
It is feasible to advance both options as part of 15%. Now, we will, any direction that the council can provide us to, what information's going to be necessary to be able to get down to one alternative at the end of 15% would be helpful, so that we're able to provide that focus over the next six months. I will say that advancing both has their complexities, because we have to look at the scenarios of if they're both hybrid, both underpass, or a variation of the two. And it may seem less complicated when looking at them one at a time, as we presented today, but the reason why I put that slide up of showing those three options is that affecting the tracks has a material impact on the ability to construct. In other words, if the tracks need to move, how far is that shoe fly going to go? What are the windows that are going to be provided for the contractor to be able to do the work? The reality of the fact that those two crossings are so close to one another, only one crossing should be closed at a time due to the access necessary for those communities. So, I would just let you know that, yes, it will take more effort, we will take that direction if both options are to be advanced, or both alternatives, and we will then analyze the scenarios associated with those.
Yeah, I mean, I understand you'll, you'll do the work and do it capably, I'm sure. I'm not an engineer, I have no clue, by advancing both, is that a six-month delay, a year delay? That's what I'm trying to better understand.
We're already working on the ability to be able to meet the committed schedule, but we're looking at still summer of '26, whether it's June or September timeframe.
Okay. Whether we, tonight or Monday, advance two options or one?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Lou? Thank you, and thank you to the entire team, thank you to the public, to the rail committee. This is obviously a huge lift and with huge implications for the city. I want to ask a couple more questions about level of service in those grades. So, as you're talking to Councilmember Stone, we can tease out the impact to neighboring intersections. What I'm hoping to see is to get a sort of consolidated view of, for all the projected or, like, current levels of traffic patterns, and how they're actually traversing that intersection, sort of what the total time might actually look like. Is that something that we can back out from the, what you're describing was available to Councilmember Stone?
Yes.
Okay.
That can be provided.
Okay, great. And so, I was also, I think I was looking at the right traffic study, would we be able to include pedestrians and cyclists and try to get a net change in their delays?
Yes, that was also provided as part of the previous traffic study, however, we can provide an update to both pedestrian and cyclist travel times.
Okay. Presumably, the net result, though, would be that the hybrid would look a bit less like an F, because you provide more directions of travel for all the options, but then the underpass would have some more trade-offs, and some directions of travel would need to take a more circuitous route. Is that how I should think about, like, the ultimate narrowing? I ultimately want to see what those numbers actually look like, but that's a direction things would go, right? Can you restate it? I want to make sure I capture your thought precisely. Okay, so, the hybrid looks quite bad in 2040. However, it allows many directions of travel and maybe more intuitive connections for bicyclists and pedestrians, at least in a couple of directions.
Yes.
For the underpass, of course, it looks very efficient, but some people would need to take a roundabout, that would add time to their trip. And if I'm just trying to look at, like, net trip time in traffic, the hybrid would look somewhat better, or the underpass would look somewhat worse, if we sort of consolidated everything into sort of one total number?
That would really depend on the path you're looking to assess.
Right, right.
So it's not just the, the reflected delay at the intersection in the presentation is a good proxy typically for overall travel impact for vehicular movement, more precisely. Yes, we can look at, for example, representative locations of travel time for both bike, or for vehicles, pedestrians, and cyclists, so that you can at least have something to compare, or at least see how it compares from a travel time perspective. And so, we can do something that was done similar in previous city studies.
Right, and we have the projected traffic volumes in any given direction for all the modes, so we can just kind of take those numbers together and we can get a total sense of like, what is the actual delay or impact to people's travel, which seems like the most important number that we want to get out of here in terms of the ultimate goal, which is mitigation to traffic.
Yes, it would not necessarily be the cumulative, but it would be at least a representative number.
What would it take and when could we potentially get a summary or like ability to see those kinds of numbers?
We can see if we can get that to the council either by the end of the week or beginning of next.
Okay, so potentially in time for a Monday meeting. That would be really critical for me. In general, I'm really persuaded by the hybrid's just significantly lower cost and want to see what the mitigations are like, what the sort of net impact for traffic would look like. So like, that would be a really critical piece of information for my decisions. What are the biggest things that we're potentially looking to change for both the hybrid and the underpass for the next phases of engineering? I'm particularly interested in how much potential you ultimately see in reducing costs and/or property impacts for either?
That is one of, or actually set of questions that we're exploring.
Right.
But as part of 15% design, or the drawings, the intent is for two critical pieces of information to be able to provide to you. One is additional constructability and construction period considerations, to be able to understand the construction of those retaining walls, the use, some of the utility relocations, be able to be, or provide more precise context of those considerations. The second, because it impacts, it's impacted by constructability, is the cost and be able to provide updated market-based cost estimates from essentially retired contractors who have this experience in estimating.
Okay. I know in the context of, say, a hybrid or just any sort of earth and structure, that there have been conversations about, oh, how much can we relax the standards? And potentially, there could be ways that require really significantly less earthworks. And, you know, those kinds of things could be a really big impact to bottom line costs, but probably wouldn't be the kinds of questions you consider at 15% engineering, right?
Actually, we do look at elements, the constructability looks at the clearances necessary to be able to build us. So we would look at the minimum clearances from active track to be able to provide a safe space for the contractor to be able to do their work. And the ability to do that then determines what the construction windows will be and then the potential cost. So we can have more context to that cost and be able to provide you more detail as to what's driving the cost. Just for context, moving earth generally is inexpensive. That's not the expensive part, is the ability or the space to move the earth, because that, just being able to provide the contractor the ability to move trucks, be able to get the trucks in and out, assuming it is trucks, it could be rail cars that bring the earth out. So we would look for opportunities to be able to improve upon the constructability of the options advanced.
Okay, thank you.
Lieutenant Baker?
Thank you, and I add my thanks to everyone who has persisted over all the years and continued to be patiently, thoughtfully, creatively, looking at the alternatives and evaluating them so that we can make the best choice possible. And Mr. Torres, right, I think you did a magnificent job explaining all of these things. It's a lot. And as the third and last council member present tonight, who is not on the Rail Committee, it was really tremendously helpful. I want to, so with respect to the ramps at the Churchill Crossing, I was very, very pleased to see the Alma Street ramp alternative. I think that addresses a lot of concerns for the residents on Seal and to have the unusual ramp down the middle of Seal. But I do have a couple of questions about the two alternatives. First, just sticking with the Seal one, another concern that I had not appreciated previously was that some of those residents would lose access to their homes for some period of time. And do you have just a ballpark sense of how long that would be, days, weeks, hours?
Well, access would still be provided to their homes, but during construction, however, it would be limited to certain times of the day or local access, so the contractor would still have to provide the ability to access those homes, similar to when there's utility relocations along a local street.
So the potential interruption of access would be a few hours here and there, or?
For a period of time, correct.
Okay, but that could happen day after day?
Yes.
For roughly how long, day after day?
The one thing I will add is that the driveways would be restricted to right in, right out. They wouldn't be any homes, and I'll share my screen again here for you. Yeah, any home along the ramp, as seen in this rendering, would, couldn't go make a left across that, so they'd have to be able to, only be able to do a right in and a right out. And they would lose their on-street parking as part of that.
Okay. And then, okay, and similarly, you mentioned that the temporary disruption of utility services would be again for a matter of hours, but potentially for days.
Weeks, in some cases, yes.
Weeks, yeah, okay. So that's another concern with that. But I did want to, while you keep, if you could keep your slides up, because I wanted to ask you just a little bit more about the Alma Street ramp. So if you could look at the second Alma Street ramp slide, which is the photograph of the ramp to from the, yes, that one, thank you. So I want to think for a minute, and there may be solutions or there may be things we can do to deal with this, but as bikes or pedestrians exit, let's start with the exit. I want to talk about both the exiting and the entering, but let's talk with, about the exiting from that ramp. So these would be eastbound bikes that have come under the tracks and presumably, at that point, would turn left down Seal. Right? Because they're on the wrong side of Alma, and presumably, they're trying to go somewhere east. So would they not, at that point, then need to cross Seal to turn left? And my concern is that a lot of times, cars traveling along Alma, particularly those who are southbound making a left turn, would not necessarily look for a bike there. So how can we protect the bicyclists exiting? And similarly, even cars coming along Seal, you don't necessarily look for a bike coming the wrong way. How can we protect those bicyclists?
Yeah, so I'm going to go to the plan view here to at least provide that context of that left turn. And so the intent there would be to, it's not just the left-turning vehicles, also the cyclists having to look over their shoulder potentially at a blind spot. So we would look as part of 15% design to see how to be able to improve those, those conditions at the intersection.
I think it's really important, and partly, so it's for the egressing bikes.
Right.
That's a word.
Yes.
But also for the entering bikes, they probably, I guess they wouldn't be coming along Alma, but I'm just worried that they would be, you know, weaving strangely as well. So I just think that, I understand, I appreciate that would be at a later level of design, but while I much, I see all the benefits over the other ramp, I think that particular corner needs a little more thought to be safe.
Yeah, and we would, what we would explore here is not only for the cyclists on the ramp going in and out, we would also consider the road cyclists on Alma Street and their ability to be able to access that location. And so that may, there may be multiple considerations there as to how to be able to provide that access.
Yes, that's what I was just referencing, that if you have a northbound bicyclist on Alma and you have somebody coming out of the ramp, how do they engage and get one to the right and, because they have to cross paths? So I just think there's a lot more engineering there that's a little different than if you had the Seal ramp, and I want to make sure that's in the mix as we do this. I still think it nets out on this side, but I think it's less of a no-brainer than I first thought when I saw it. So I would appreciate, you know, that being kept in consideration, it sounds like you're already there. Okay, and then another general question I have is for the hybrid options at Meadow and Charleston, and I apologize if it's probably somewhere in the materials, but I couldn't quickly discern it. From what, what I did see on the renderings, it looked like the raised tracks are on top of a wall. And we had talked last time, one of the reasons I was more interested in the hybrid last time was we talked about that being able, and maybe it's just the design phase again, but I want to make sure that when we're considering this option, we talked about that also being able to be on pillars or pedestals, more like a viaduct. So is that still the case with what we're, with the options we're looking at now?
Yes. Yes, I'm trying to pull up that slide of the bridge examples that we had for you.
Thank you.
Yes, further down. We did present these options to Rail Committee that shows different options that are available for the hybrid in order to be able to place the columns supporting the bridge structure. So yes, it would be retaining walls or an abutment on either end. We looked at an option where the column support is in the center, providing more open on the sides, separating traffic. We looked at what's known as side column options, where the columns would effectively almost behave as protection between traffic and pedestrians and cyclists. And then at the request of a Rocker, we also looked at the ability to widen that bridge and provide a wider space for pedestrian and cyclists on either side of those columns.
So that's at the bridge. Between the two crossings, it would stay elevated, right?
Correct.
I had thought that that area could also be on pedestals and not necessarily a wall. So that, that's what the piece I'm concerned about.
At that point, it would behave as either a very long bridge or effectively a viaduct, and that becomes more expensive to provide.
Yeah, it would be essentially a lower viaduct, but that's more expensive than having a wall?
Yes. Yeah, it's substantially order of magnitude more expensive than a retaining wall in Earth.
Yeah, because I thought that was still, we assured that was an option and, okay, so that hadn't, hasn't been costed, other than to say it'd be more.
Correct.
Okay. So I'm, over time, Mr. Mayor, I would say this has been tremendously helpful, but by a personal view, and I don't know what my colleagues' view is, I would say for those of us not on the Rail Committee, this is a lot to digest. And for me personally, I would like to go back and reflect on what I've learned since we have this agendaized for Monday, take another look at the materials, come back with, as I have others, like small questions now, but I think when I really focus in, there might be more, and I would be personally better prepared to really work this through with my colleagues. I do think we need to get to a decision, but my recommendation would be to, at this point, continue that discussion, but, you know, it's all obviously up to the body.
Yeah, the question on that was also, Councilmember Stone had asked some questions, and would you be able to have it back as quick as Monday? Because that's when, that's when we're scheduled for the next meeting.
Yeah, we'll, we'll definitely look at it tonight to see what the level of effort will be, but we want to make sure that we are able to provide accurate information in terms of that travel time and be able to represent also the, the network implications here. We showed the intersections adjacent to the crossings, but also be able to show the network improvements overall.
Yeah, that has, that has to be completely accurate, no question, which means that if you say you can't have it, then we really can't have that agenda on Monday. We would have to punt that because that's the last of the season here.
I'll commit to having it to you by Monday.
Well, if there's like eight of nine things you can have, you know, as long as the ninth one, the ninth one's not critical. All right, thanks. Councilmember Lythgott-Hames had another question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have another one to add to the mix. I think it's been raised by members of the public, and it's certainly where I've landed as originally a viaduct fan who became a hybrid fan, who's really listening to the arguments about traffic safety and efficiency of those intersections. So I'm really appreciating that underpass yields, you know, grade A and B intersections instead of grade C, D, or F. Toward that end, though, then we face the property impacts, and I think the question has been raised by members of the public, what are the, what will we be able to offer people? Maybe, I'm looking at you, but I should probably be looking at the city manager. When will we be able to provide more guidance as to the approach the city might take if somebody hypothetically sees their home on the map and says, I'd rather sell it to you now than wait around for four or five years to figure out if you're actually going to use it? Would we be able to say, to entertain that? If not now, when would we be able to? What are the ramifications? There's tremendous uncertainty and fear when we're talking about impacts, and I think, you know, the sooner we can get to clarity on what type of impact, what degree we're talking about, and what the homeowner's next steps might be, I think that'll help us assess whether underpass is a much more attractive solution because impacts are ameliorated or handled well, or a really hard solution because some people are going to end up, you know, needing to sell us their homes.
So I think in response to, I mean, I think that in terms of a decision on properties, a couple of things. One thing is that if council wants to authorize the city to be able to, you know, to purchase things, that's, that is a council decision. In terms of the impacts, we, I think that people need to, you know, we don't have clarity on the impacts at the moment, so people should continue to live their lives and use their properties in the way that they want to until we have clarity on, on what those impacts are.
Council, just want to reiterate that for the project, we will not be able to use the project funding to purchase any property until we complete the environmental impact study report.
That's 35%?
With the 35%, and after that, we would have to go through the, since the federal funding is involved and state funding is involved, we have to go through the entire process of federal funding and state requirements in order to initiate the process for any property acquisitions.
So city funds only could be used to acquire properties sooner than that?
In advance, yes.
Not even, city funds cannot be used. So since federal funding is involved?
Not if there's any expectation that the city funding would count toward the overall project cost or be participating, is, I think is the term of art. So in effect, it would be a transaction completely separated from the project altogether, if that makes sense.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think the 15% engineering needs to be done to give us kind of latitude to get at all sort of serious about that. So, Councilmember Wood?
Thank you. First, I think the Vice Mayor's comments on really needing to have the opportunity to reflect on this is, it's what we thought would be the case and why we broke this up, and I think that affirmation is useful. On the, one thing on the property impacts, aside from whether we could do any early acquisitions, is simply the information on what is existing tax law and other incentives that, that help ameliorate properties that are acquired through either eminent domain or for public purposes. And whatever we can get back, even on my And whatever we can get back even on Monday, these things are, you know, out there in the public domain. I know there's a certain apprehension about presenting this as city information, but a lot of this is, it's tax law, and people don't know that, and we're not providing it, and there's a great, a greater apprehension in the absence of that information than it would be with it. It's not that all the apprehension would go away, but at least people need to understand that. And that information is out there. People have to Google it. Any of the law firms that specialize in this have web pages that just lay this information out there. And then, one other thing, Edgar, I don't know if you'd be able to do this in advance on Monday, but the bicycle travel times, for instance, at Charleston, if a bicyclist has a more circuitous route versus a route where they have to stop at the traffic signal, how do those times compare if that's readily available by Monday? If not, I understand.
So we do have the previous study slides for that travel time. The effort to be able to extract the information for vehicular travel times more straightforward, bikes and peds are a little bit more challenging. It's mostly because the software, while it takes those phases into consideration, we have to take some judgment as to when a bike arrives or, you know, creating some randomness, so to speak. So we can take, we could take a look at that.
Yeah, and even if we can know the circuitous uninterrupted time, we can make our own ballparks on average signal wait time and what that would add.
We can provide some preliminary numbers on those.
Okay, thanks.
Any other comments from council?
Yeah, could I? Sorry.
There it goes. Yes.
Tired. You know what? Councilmember Lou said something about things looking a lot worse in 2040, and I turned to Councilmember Stone and said, "I'll be looking a lot worse in 2040 also," which just speaks to the significance of this project and the duration that we're trying to do the right thing over the long haul. There is a question about the circuitous route that gun students will travel if they live east of Alma and are returning home from gun on a bicycle, how they will have to do kind of a letter W or a cursive U turn. And I wonder if you could pull up that map and just show us what that reality would be? Because I think the point has been made that, you know, kids in particular, you know, like water, they want to find a way, they want to find the fastest way, they're not necessarily going to take some route because the city designated it for them. And if that intersection for bicycles seems really out of the way, you know, are we in danger of sending them just straight down regular old Charleston Road?
My apologies. I'll use Meadow as an example and I'll go back to Charleston. So when you do have the both lanes on one side of the street in order to be able to provide their dedicated facility through a multi-use path, there needs to be a point at either end in which cyclists can be able to cross the street. So for example, in this case, if they're going along westbound on Meadow, they would need to be able to find a place at which they're able to cross and then access that multi-use path. So it's here, reflected in green, and then be able to use the multi-use path and then be able to cross again to be able to get to the facility on the west side.
Sorry, that's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about Charleston underpass heading eastbound on Charleston.
So in this case, it would be very similar. I was using that as an example here. So if we use the underpass with direct access ramp here, and I'm going to zoom in.
Could we go to the rendering that shows the green bike path?
Yes. So in this case, if the cyclists are on the north side of Charleston, they do actually have a pretty straightforward access to that multi-use path. They would be able to access, I forget which road this was, but they'd be able to access it from the north without having to cross traffic and be able to continue. Now, if they come up to this point, they could either continue as a road user on this lane here from Park Boulevard, essentially as a share or a bike Boulevard, and then continue to the west, to any bike facility to the west. On the eastbound side, they would have to come along the lane here, continue along the Ped Bridge, which is at a direction, and then continue on the multi-use path. Now, if they live on the south side of Charleston, then they would need to use the intersection at Mumford to be able to access the communities and homes to the south of Charleston.
Yep. I think it's that in the bottom-left portion of the screen is that if they're on the right side of Charleston Road headed east, they come up to the green, they have to go up and around, they make a very tight U-turn down at the bottom, and then go straight to go under the train and the road. I think that's, the assertion is that they're not going to do that. But to your point, they could just come down Charleston on, you know, the left side of Charleston, although I'm not sure we want them to do that.
We wouldn't recommend going opposing traffic. That's not allowed per vehicle code.
Exactly. Okay. I thought you were advocating for that earlier. Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, just to be consistent and formal, I think we should have a motion to continue this to the 15th.
So moved to the second.
Any other discussion? Please take a vote.
Just confirming the maker was Councilmember Lithgow-Hames and the second was Vice Mayor Vinker. Okay. Mayor Lalling?
Yes.
Councilmember Lou?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Vinker?
Yes.
Councilmember Burt?
Yes.
Councilmember Lithgow-Hames?
Yes.
Councilmember Stone?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And once again, thanks to the public for all your input and great staff work, and enjoy your wonderful weekend getting ready for this.